Oh.
Oh, no, I think it was.
I always. I try to space them.
What did my office and I'll take it.
Welcome to the Rosemont City Planning Commission for April 23rd. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Let's get started with the meeting. Our first item on the meeting is oath of office and appointment of and reappointment of planning commissioners. At this time, I think we want to have the commissioners come up front. Is that right, Aaron?
I. I. I swear.
I swear.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Minnesota.
And the state of Minnesota.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the planning commissioner for the city of Rosemont.
Of the planning commissioner for the city of Rosemont.
In the county of Dakota.
In the county of Dakota.
And the state of Minnesota.
And the state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So, again.
Are there any additions to tonight's agenda?
There are no additions, but staff would just like to note that there was a recent update to the agenda ahead of the meeting to add the request by enclave companies to public hearings 6A, just as a note to those that may be listening at home.
Okay, thank you. And for that one, is that the one we're going to continue? It was the public hearings open and we'll continue that?
Yep.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, so next up is the consent agenda, and the only item on the consent agenda is the minutes from the March 18th regular meeting. I recognize that we do not have a quorum of commissioners who are here for that meeting. I know Commissioner Whitman and I were here. I am comfortable with the minutes. I think they reflect accurately that meeting. I'll ask Kurt if he does as well, and I will take a vote if the new commissioners are also comfortable. This is fairly administrative. You can vote in as well. Kurt, are you?
Yeah, I'm comfortable. I have no additions.
Okay, great. Then I'll make a movement to approve the consent agenda for March 18th. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Move by Commissioner Reed, seconded by Commissioner Whitman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. All right, next up is old business. Is there any old business to go over today?
None, Mr. Chair.
Great, 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 great. Let's see here. Okay, so we're going to move on to the the public hearings. The next item on the agenda is the public hearings. I want to ask first, actually, we should do audience input. We didn't do that first, did we? I'll go back for a second, sorry. The audience input section is for anyone in the audience who has a question or comment that they want to make that's not on the agenda. Is there any audience input? Okay, very good. Now I'll move on, sorry about that. Now it's time for public hearings. The first item on the public hearings is a request by First State Bank of Rosemount and Akron 42.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. With that enclave company, we would still need a motion for item 6A.
Okay.
To continue that to the May meeting.
Okay, that, thank you.
Because the public hearing is open.
Okay, great. So for that item, the request for First State Bank of Rosemount, we opened up the public hearing last week, so it's quite simply a motion to keep the public hearing open. I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, move by Commissioner Reed, seconded by Commissioner Whitman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is the request by Northern State's Power, Excel Energy.
Mr. Chair, if we could just clarify, if you have the, if you want to take a look at your surface, we should have the the updated agenda on there, so just shift everything down once. So, A, on the under-public hearings, it was a request by enclave, which we just voted to continue to the next.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Item B, which is the one that we would suggest that you open the public hearing for coming up next, is the request by First State Bank.
Cool, thank you so much. I had an old copy, and so that makes a lot more sense when I was doing, okay. So, item A, we've taken care of. Item B is a request for First State Bank of Rosemount and Akron 42 LLC for approval of preliminary and final plats to subdivide land on the north side of Highway 42 and west of Akron Avenue. Anthony?
Okay, so this is two requests, but it's really basic, it's really related to a single property here in Rosemount on the north side of 42. This is a land that is designated for commercial development just south of the Roars Apartment Building for preliminary and final plat approval for two plats. The first plat would create two parcels, the second plat would take one of those parcels and then further subdivide it. So it's been combined into one single item on the agenda just due to their closely related nature. So, as I said, it's two plats. The first one by Akron 42 LLC would subdivide the parcel into two, two parcels, and then First State Bank of Rosemount is requesting further subdivision of the western portion of the first plat into three parcels. As the two commissioners that were present may recall, there was a site plan and conditional use permit approved at the last meeting for a bank and coffee shop combined into a single building with drive-through facilities. So again, if approved, the proposed plats would create three buildable lots and then one outlot containing the stormwater infrastructure in the northern portion of that plat area. So here's the subject property. On the west side of this property is Abbey Field Avenue, and then here is Akron Avenue, and then 42 is along the south. Here's a internal private east-west road with the, you can see the footprint of the Roars Apartment Building on this aerial that was taken, I believe, last fall. As I said, the site is designated for commercial development in this western portion of the northwestern quadrant of Akron Avenue, and it's also zoned C4 PUD, general commercial planned unit development. It is part of the Preswood Place Planned Unit Development, Master Development Plan. There are no specific zoning standards such as minimum setbacks or lot areas contained as deviations within the planned unit development agreement. So the site itself is is bound by the standard, standards contained within the zoning ordinance. This is just a little bit of context for the commission here showing the plat area as well as the site plan for First State Bank's proposed property here. Also note that site plan was conditioned on the approval of a plat that would subdivide this, that plat being consistent with the plat shown on the site plan. So if we're looking at this plat area, the Akron 42 plat, Preswood Place 25th Edition, would create this parcel, and I will show the actual plats as we move forward, as well as one other parcel on the west side here. The First State Bank of Rosemount request would plat this parcel into three, two buildable lots and an outlot here. And this would be the infiltration basin on the north. So again, this is the Preswood Place 25th Edition plat being proposed. You can see Lot 1, Block 1, and Lot 1, Block 2 here with the perimeter drainage and utility easements that are standard applied across the city as part of the city's engineering guidelines. The second plat, the First State Bank of Rosemount plat, also note, the title of this will change to Preswood Place 26th Edition just so that it's consistent with the other plats within the overall Preswood Place Planned Unit Development, but Lot 1 and 2 as well as Outlot A here. Lot 1 is containing that bank and coffee shop use, the site plan of which I just showed. These will all have drainage and utility easements applied to them as well. The lot standards for these two parcels in the C4 zoning district, a minimum lot area of 20,000 square feet, the minimum or the smallest lot created here is 45,000 square feet, 300. The minimum lot width is 120 feet, and the minimum one in this actual plat is 172 feet. So the actual parcels created do meet the standards of the city code related to commercial development in the C4 district. There are other development standards that would apply once development is proposed on each site, such as setbacks, lot coverage, building height. That will be reviewed by the commission through site plan review process ahead of any development on those remaining parcels. Also note that there is a park dedication requirement for any subdivided parcels here in the city, which is equal to 10% of the land for that is being subdivided. In this case, the 5.7 acre site would require .572 acres of park land dedication. Because the city's park master plan does not identify any parks within these subdivision areas, staff is recommending a fee paid in lieu of land dedication. The city's Parks and Recreation Director did note that that fee can be paid with the building permits as opposed to with the subdivision agreement due to the fact that it is being subdivided and sold off. That who pays what when just can be determined between the buyer and the seller of the parcel so long as it's paid prior to the building permit. Park dedication fee totals for the entire site, 5,000 or $51,480, and that's based on a $90,000 per acre valuation within the city's fee list. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of the preliminary and final plats for both additions. Those motions are contained within the staff reports. The subject, the the main condition, also note, is renaming the plat that is currently titled First State Bank of Rosemount to Preswood Place 26th Edition. I'm happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Are there any questions from the commissioners at this time?
Is the .572 acres, does that reflect Lot 1 and 2, the outlaw, what does that reflect, I guess?
It reflects this entire plat area.
The whole piece, okay.
Yep.
I'll just say, I haven't, I don't have any questions on this since we just saw this, I think, last month, and it seems in alignment with the plans reviewed at that time. Are there any other questions from commissioners? Commissioner Whitman?
Yeah, thank you. Just a, just a question, and I agree, or I'm fine with the idea of the fee in lieu being paid at the time of building permits. I'm just curious of how, how that's communicated? Is that, you know, is it, it's obviously part of the approval if this gets approved, but how would a potential purchaser or buyer like know about that, you know, otherwise?
Well, part of their due diligence would be to work with the seller to understand what sort of development fees that may still be required, but it is certainly something that comes up when they request the building permit, and it's part of their building permit fees, well before there's a certificate of occupancy. So it's kind of between the, between the seller and buyer on that place. Because we do know that they are working with those and we have contact and we have relationships with the property owners here, it's something that we've communicated with them specifically and, you know, would would hope that they would share that with their buyers as well.
Okay, and so staff's comfortable, just, you know, and something doesn't happen with those buyers, and in the future then someone else comes along and says, what are you talking about? I don't, I don't have it paid, you know, where do, I don't see this anywhere.
Yeah.
You're comfortable that you've got enough on the record.
Right, and these are anticipated to develop in a somewhat short timeframe versus 20 years from now. That's when we, and maybe it's only because when we look back 20 years, the records are just different, they're, you know, paper records in the basement sometimes, but with these, it's pretty clearly memorialized in the actions by the council and planning commission for those sorts of fees.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Any other questions?
Well, just, is the, so the, the park dues, they are assessed for both Lot 1 and Lot 2, and that they're paid upfront, and then that will be, it's up to the developer and the buyers to figure out how those costs get.
So there's two ways that park dedication fees are collected by the city. Either prior to recording the plat, a lot of times what we will do is collect those with the recording of the plat for like larger residential developments, because a lot of times it would just be too complicated to divvy out the fee per site. So we'll get those upfront prior to releasing the MyLARS so the developer can go and record them with the county. But if we do not collect them with that, they can be collected during the building permit process according to the city's fee, fee list that was adopted by the council, that is adopted by the council every January. The same with development fees, too. There are times where development fees such as trunk area charges for sewer and water are not collected with the MyLARS or the plat, and they then are collected with the building permit.
Okay.
So, yeah, it's something that we review. Whenever a development does come in, we review the resolutions related to those approvals prior to signing the building permits.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions? Okay, this is a public hearing, so at this time I will open the public hearing. First thing, though, do we, did we receive any written questions?
No, we didn't receive any written.
Okay, excellent. Then it's time for anyone in the audience who would like to come up and make comments if you do want to come up, and also the applicants. If you do want to come up, please state your name and your address and what your questions are. All right, I will make a movement to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Was that Commissioner, okay, thanks. Motion made by Mike, by Commissioner Reed, seconded by Commissioner Beadner. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is now closed. Yeah, this seems really much in alignment with what we've seen in the past. Appreciate the work on this. We, for those newer commissioners, we reviewed this last month at length, and we had the applicants here from, from the First State of, First State Bank of Rosemount. I think this is going to be a great development, it's going to be great for that area of the city. Are there any final questions or comments before we make a movement? Okay, would somebody like to make a movement, a motion? Okay, I'll start, I'll say, I'll make a motion to recommend city council approve the preliminary and final plats for Preswood Place 25th Edition, subject to the following conditions, numbers 1 and 2. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Move by Commissioner Reed, seconded by Commissioner Ellis. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Oh, second motion. Motion to recommend the city council approve the preliminary and final plats, First State Bank of Rosemount, subject to the following conditions, numbers 1 through 3. Is there a second?
Second.
Move by Commissioner Reed, seconded by Commissioner Buji. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, thank you, Anthony. All right, so next up on the agenda is, on the correct agenda, is a request for Northern State's, State's Power, Excel Energy, for approval of a PUD final site and building plan to construct an electrical substation.
Hi, commissioners, I am presenting on behalf of Excel Energy for a site, final site and building plan review for an electrical substation within the Project Bigfoot Planned Unit Development. The substation will be known as Umore Park Substation, and the planning commission is being asked to approve this building and site plan review. Electrical substations are considered essential service facilities, so they are permitted within the zoning district in which it's located, and staff finds the plan to be consistent with zoning regulations, land use regulations, and the Project Bigfoot PUD agreement. So the site is located about a quarter mile south of Highway 42 and then directly west of Blaine Avenue. It's, the parcel is approximately 14 acres, and I want to note that Project Bigfoot and the electrical substation are located within Umore Park as well. The Project Bigfoot PUD site plan, preliminary and final plats were approved by city council December 21st, 2023, and the Rosemount Transmission Line in which the substation connects to, that permit was approved for Excel Energy in March 2023. So the site is locate, is zoned as Business Park PUD, and it's designated as Business Park. In the future, it's surrounded by agricultural zoning districts, and then majority of the surrounding land use designation is also Business Park, and then you have kind of to the west and a little bit to the south, medium density residential and public institutional. Here's the overall site plan from Project Bigfoot. So you can see that there's the Highway 42 up above, there's a private gated access to the main facilities of Project Bigfoot, and in the bottom southeast corner is where the substation will be located adjacent to another substation owned by Project Bigfoot. Here is it a little more up close. So the lot coverage is approximately 21%. The fenced area is approximately 3.14 acres, and the maximum lot coverage is 75%, and the lot coverage is 21%. It exceeds all setbacks. The setbacks for Business Park is 30 feet from the right-of-way, 10 feet for side and rear yard. From the front, the substation is set back 500 feet, 70 feet to the north, 260 feet to the south, and 40 feet in the rear yard. The maximum structural height is per the PUD agreement, sorry, not per the PUD agreement, but per for being an essential service facility within Business Park is 75 feet, and the maximum height for the transmission line structures, which we'll see a 3D picture of, a 3D rendering of here shortly, is 62 feet max. There'll be access via a 25-foot heavy-duty asphalt driveway coming off of Blaine Avenue. There are no parking facilities, but Excel is, has been given permission to utilize parking facilities that are located a little bit northernmost within the Project Bigfoot site. There's a retention pond as well in the, in the southeast corner of the parcel in which stormwater runoff will be directed towards. So here is the general arrangement plan. So there's gated access through the fences, and then the trans, the substation will connect to the substation owned by Project Bigfoot, adjacently to the west. And then in the bottom corner, you can kind of see a 3D rendering of what it would look Here is the profile elevation plan, so again, it's just those big transmission line poles that are about 62 feet, and then the rest of the structures range from 10 to 25 feet in height. Here's the elevation plan with fencing. The fencing will be 7100 Amigard security mesh, and the mesh is, that was chosen was out of two options, which has the highest opacity, and the fence is up to 10 feet in height. Per the Big, Project Bigfoot PUD agreement, the maximum height for fencing is 14 feet as long as it's 50 feet back from the right-of-way. And so since the setback for the substation is five, over 500 feet, that does meet that Here is a 3D rendering with the fence and kind of from Blaine Avenue, so you can see kind of to your left the retention pond, about roughly that what that size would be, and then you can see the fencing is set back pretty far from the street. Here's an additional rendering. This is just going farther down Blaine Avenue, past the drive. So Project Bigfoot is responsible for landscaping, initial site preparation, land clearing, rough grading, and the tree inventory and survey per the city's tree ordinance. Landscaping will be completed in part of Phase 1 in Project Bigfoot's landscaping plan. The northern end of the retention pond, you don't see as much landscaping, and that's just to make room for overhead electrical lines, so that way there's no trees within 50 feet of those transmission lines. And I do want to note that there is no screening required since, since the substation is not directly adjacent to a commercial residential or public institutional use. Here is from, here's the architectural plan, you can kind of get a better idea of the landscaping and where existing overhead power lines will be connecting. Rough grading and connection to public utilities, as well as the stormwater pollution prevention plan, falls under Project Bigfoot's responsibilities, but the stormwater pollution prevention plan will be transferred to Excel Energy once that is, once construction is complete of Project Bigfoot. There's no public utility services needed on the site, there will be no human waste created on the site, so therefore it's not treated. In December of 2022, an environmental assessment was submitted. Noise levels produced by 115 kilovolt transmission lines and associated stub, substations are, they found that they were generally less noise than an outdoor background noise, and that they must comply by state noise standards as established by the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. All lighting will be nonessential and at least 100 feet from any roadway. Per the Business Park PUD regulations, the maximum height of exterior lighting is 30 feet, their yard lighting will be 30 feet, and then there will be 10 feet high motion sensor lighting for security purposes. And then I just also want to note, since this was kind of a concern, when Project Bigfoot had their meeting with planning commission and city council, there are no current electric and magnetic field level regulations in Minnesota. The Minnesota Public Utility Commission established like an electric field limit of eight kilovolts per meter, and then per the environmental assessment that was submitted in December 2022, the electric field maximum was calculated to be 2.3 kilovolts per meter, and that included the substation, so that is below that limit that Minnesota Public Utilities Commission has set. So the recommendation is the motion to approve the final site and building plan to allow Excel Energy to construct an electrical substation, subject to the following conditions. And I haven't received any notes or emails from residents or any complaints, so I'm happy to answer questions, and then the applicant is also here if they have, if you have any questions.
Very good, thank you. I'll start off, and there might, there might be a couple that I can see our representatives from Excel here might, might be more appropriate there. Excite, I think this is the first, well, I should say, we've seen the preliminary plans around this in Project Bigfoot, so there's, again, nothing here that's a surprise, it's really to be expected. And there was a lot of discussion around EMF and other safety concerns, and I think most of those have been addressed, but I, one, maybe one question for the applicant when, when they come up. But this is, this is the first detailed plan that we've seen, I think, and I, since I'm on the commission for a substation. under the commission for a substation. Do we have any sense of how this compares from a safety and fencing standpoint to other substations in the area?
I do not have an answer to that.
So they aren't common in Rosemount. There is one other one that is in the eastern part of the city, kind of closer to Flint Hills and land that Flint Hills owns. It's typical for this, it's fenced. I do believe that this fence is a little bit, offers a little more screening than the one that is currently in existence over on the eastern side of the city, but generally it's, it's a substation, there isn't a whole lot of variety or opportunity for architectural embellishments with them, but it, it appears to be pretty consistent with the other one that we do have here in town. And I would also defer to the applicant on, on how this compares to other substations, maybe that are more contemporary, because I can't, I, I don't know off the top of my head when that one was constructed east of Highway fifty-two.
Okay, thank you, Anthony. I did have other questions, but I think they're for the applicant. Do the commissioners have any questions for Alicia?
No.
All right, very good. Then we'll go ahead, and this is a public hearing, we'll open the public hearing. I think you already stated there's no comments that were written or sent in. So at this time, I'll ask the applicant to come up. State your name and your address, please.
Hi, good evening. I'm Kirsten Sersland, and I'm at the Newport, Minnesota office. I am the Community Relations Manager for Xcel Energy, representing the city, I'm, I'm your representative to the city of Rosemount, so it's nice to be here. Alicia, thank you, that was, she did a great job teeing everything up. I'm here with Marcus Green, he's with ERM, and a familiar face, Jake Andre, he's been in front of you before many times, so we're happy to address any questions.
Great. There, there have been a lot of questions and concern about EMF, and I think it's been answered a few times, but I'm gonna add just a couple clarifications. I think initially it was characterized, the amount of EMF is something like a cellphone or something to that level, you wanna explain, say more about that?
I, I can, I would defer to Jake on that one, because we've heard that before, but we, we'd also just defer to the, to the meta, the Project Bigfoot PUD. It's nothing that comes out of our substation, that's more a construct of the Project Bigfoot.
Okay. And then, I see, I didn't realize until we saw this that there's really no regulations or regula, regulatory rules around EMF. Is part of Xcel's general maintenance, do they measure that, they come out, check noise as well, is that something that?
We do, we do that on a routine basis. We've got folks that check our substations and our transmission lines, and we make sure that we are in compliance. It's, I think it's the, the environmental, it's the EPA or the Minnesota Environmental, they're the, MPCA, thank you, that's the, that's what I'm, that's the acronym I'm looking for. So the MPCA keeps us in check on that, so they do have regulations, and we're well under those.
Okay, very good, thank you. Are there any questions from other commissioners?
Quick comment on the fence and the safety, it's, it's a little more privacy, it's a little more secure. The number-one issue we have with substations is animals, so we want to make sure.
Is what?
Animals.
Okay.
Yeah, so ninety-nine percent of the time, it's a squirrel or a raccoon or a duck that gets in there, so this is a higher-security fence with a little more privacy, and it's gonna keep things out that we don't want in, four-legged and two-legged.
Had a question. So at a, kind of at a high level, I saw that there was like an owner substation in this one as well, can you walk us through why there's kind of two substations?
That's part of Project Bigfoot's, that was part of their PUD, they wanted to, their own in addition to ours, and ours is to connect that transmission line, the new transmission line that's coming in, with our power, and then connect that also with Project Bigfoot's power. Yeah, so it just, it links the two, they've got their own that they're responsible for, and then we're supplementing that.
And is this substation serving all of Rosemount or just Project Bigfoot?
It is serving a transmission line and also supplementing, so a transmission line carries power from point A to point B, it's kind of agnostic of city, you're not gonna see a dedicated transmission line for the city of Rosemount. They go to substations, substations have feeders, feeders go to the city. So this supports a transmission line that come, you know, there's a generation that starts the power, there's transmission that carries it, and there's feeders that step it down. So this is that, that substation that takes the power from the transmission, steps it down for use for Project Bigfoot. I imagine there will be other feeders that can feed into this for other Rosemount developments as it comes.
Okay.
Commissioner Whitman?
Thank you. I'm not sure if this question is exactly relevant to this or not, but I, but I keep thinking about it. I heard, and I can't remember where I heard it, but I know it was in the public, whether it was something published or spoken, but stating that Project Bigfoot is a fully renewable, like, it's all renewable energy that's being used for the facility, does that, does that have any relation, I guess, to this, or can you comment on that, or is that not, that's just?
Yeah, I can't comment on that, I wouldn't wanna, I wouldn't wanna speak out of turn on that.
But this, but this substation is bringing in, is transferring energy, but that energy coming in is not necessarily renewable energy?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. On the whole, I mean, Xcel Energy has somewhere in the fifty percent of renewable energy, so it's, it's got a mix of that, because it's a transmission and it comes from generation, so.
Got it, okay.
I couldn't, I couldn't say specifically on that, but that is part of our company goals, is renewable energy.
Thank you.
Yeah?
Yeah, great, perfect.
Good evening, Commissioners, Jake Andre, Xcel Energy, I'm on the Economic Development Team. Appreciate the time this evening. On your question related to renewable energy procurement, as Christine had mentioned, you know, we're roughly just shy of seventy percent carbon-free in our system, a smaller subset of that is classified as traditional renewable energies, I think wind, solar, and it's all just kind of an integrated grid. So you don't necessarily know necessarily if the electrons coming into your home are where necessarily they're sourced, it's all kind of a mix. Related to Project Bigfoot, they have, you know, very robust sustainability initiatives, now moving forward throughout the lifetime of their facility, and it's very common practice for them and a lot of other data centers to procure a hundred percent renewable energy credits to wholly cover all of, of their anticipated demand levels for their system. And so while Christine and I internally will continue to kind of develop and push for new renewable energy, carbon-free sources on our system, that will take time as we kind of naturally go through that, that transition to more intermittent sources.
Got it, okay, yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah.
Any more questions?
Question. The, the way I understand this is the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan will be transferred over to Xcel for the responsibility, but presumably that will cover the entire site of Project Bigfoot. So you will, you just have a small section of that, is that just part of the grading permit process where you're closing your other parts of the permit and then keeping that active, or how is that a responsibility for Xcel then to manage the entire site of Project Bigfoot's best management practices throughout the entire, for the entire site?
That's a question for our engineer, and I'm gonna hand it over to Marcus.
All right.
Hello, Commissioners, my name is Marcus Green, I'm with ERM, address is two-two-two South Ninth Street in Minneapolis, Minnesota. So the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan that Project Bigfoot has right now is for the entire site. However, Project Bigfoot, it will be going in there and completing construction, they are responsible right now for sediment and erosion control best management practices, as well as the installation of stormwater best management practices on the site. So eventually, once they get to the point where Xcel is satisfied with those items, that's when the SWIP will be, you know, agreed upon to be transferred over to Xcel Energy in order to meet the conditions of their SWIP under a common plan of development for the site. Any further questions on that?
So, so the intent is to have the remainder of the site cleaned up?
Buttoned up.
Utilities buttoned up, okay.
Exactly.
Yep.
Cool.
Any other questions? All right, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Reed, seconded by Commissioner Ellis, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Okay, public hearing is now closed. Again, I thought Phil is like really in alignment with the plans we've seen a number of times, I've, I've really appreciated the, the education and presentations from Xcel, especially around EMF, because there continues to be a lot of questions about that, just something that's not well-understood. But I think we've kind of gotten out any, any concerns and answered those really, really well here. Are there any other questions from commissioners?
And as you, as you do have questions, please feel free to reach out, I'm your Community Relations Manager, I can funnel those questions to people that are smarter than me and know more than me that can get back to you. But again, thank you so much for your continued work with us, it's been a pleasure to work with Planning Commission, the city of Rosemount always. We enjoy coming out here, and it's been a good experience for us as well.
All right, thank you. All right, would somebody like to make a motion?
Sure.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the final site and building plan to allow Xcel Energy to construct an electrical substation, subject to the conditions that are laid out in, in the executive summary.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Whitman, seconded by Commissioner Bedener, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. All right, next up is the request by KJ Walk Incorporated for Preliminary and Final Plan Approval for Rosewood Commons Third Edition. Julia?
All right. Right, so this request is a preliminary and final plat for Rosewood Commons Third Edition, so a little bit of a summary of the request. So KJ Walk, Inc. is requesting approval of preliminary and final plats for Rosewood Commons Third Edition to create five buildable lots and one outlot for future commercial development. So a little bit of overview, Rosewood Commons preliminary plat was approved by the City Council back in twenty-twenty, with the final plat being approved in early twenty-twenty-two for that. Then also Rosewood Commons Second Edition, their preliminary and final plats were approved in early twenty-twenty-three by City Council as well. Just kind of wanna make a reference for this, but commercial development projects do require site plan reviews, so standards related to setbacks, lot coverage, building height will be reviewed by staff and Planning Commission when applications are submitted. I know Anthony did kind of state that earlier with Preswick Place Twenty-Fifth and Twenty-Sixth Edition. So a little bit of overview with the site location, so the thirteen-point-five-eight-acre area is located directly north of County Road forty-two and west of Business Parkway. So you can see that rose on, at least on here with the lots, so Rosewood Commons, seven buildable lots to the north where you can kind of see in my cursor, that was approved with Rosewood Commons, the first edition with their final plat. And then you can see Suite Living, Memory Care and Assisted Living Facility has been constructed on one of those buildable sites. For Rosewood Commons Second Edition, it was these three located directly west of Business Parkway, to the west the two lots, and then also the one lot to the right of Business Parkway, and that's where the New Horizons Academy is being constructed currently. So here's an overview of Rosewood Commons Third Edition, well, the whole area, in whole, you can kind of see, so again, like I had stated, that northern portion was approved with Rosewood Commons, that was for more high-density residential with senior living apartments, and then also that Memory Care Facility located right there. All the lots directly north of County Road forty-two was reserved for commercial development. And you can see, one, the lots one, two, three, four, five shown on this area is those five buildable lots that are being proposed to be subdivided currently, with Outlot A being that remaining land that can be subdivided in the future for development down the line. A little overview of the preliminary plat, a little bit closer, so this zoning ordinance contains standards related to dimensions of lots within the C4 General Commercial Zoning District, which all these properties are in that zoning district. There is no minimum lot depth specified in the city code, but the minimum lot width and area are required. You can see in this table right here that all five proposed buildable lots do meet those minimum width and minimum area requirements. And then shown is the final plat for the area, like I had stated, the five buildable lots and the outlot. You can see that one-hundred-and-forty-ninth Street will be extended west to give access to those proposed buildable lots. And then also would like to mention that the city's park and recreation staff did review the proposed plats, and is also recommending cash-in lieu of land dedication, kind of like what you had seen with the final plat, the final plat earlier tonight. The memo does state that the park dedication fees will be due for each lot prior to issuance of a building permit as well. So recommendations, so motion to recommend the City Council approve the preliminary and final plats for Rosewood Commons Third Edition, subject to conditions one and two. At this time, I can answer any questions that the Planning Commission may have.
Just for context, I think you hit some of this, but the Memory Care Facility and that, that's already been opened, just to the north of that, there, I think we had approved the plans for medium-density, I think, tunnels, are those still, are those still planned to go in there?
They are still buildable lots, at this time, the city has not gotten.
Further plans.
Plans directly yet, as of now, it's just a Suite Living Facility that has been developed on there, but those are developable lots, they were approved with the final plat of Rosewood Commons. So those seven lots that are, the four that are located north of the Memory Care Facility, and then the two lots directly east.
If I could also interrupt, that was approved as a Plan Unit of Development, Master Development Plan, so they can come forward with building permits currently, and also note the applicant is present, who can probably speak to a timing on those buildings themselves, too.
Excellent, okay, thank you. You know, the other question I had, and this may relate to the next item on the agenda, but as we add a lot of businesses in this area with this plan and to the, the next plan on the east here, we'll, we'll see a lot more traffic, you know, on one-hundred-and-forty-ninth there. Can you, if you can, can you go over what is the expected, I mean, I know, I know we'll do traffic analysis when, when it comes time for that, but in terms of future plans, lighting, do we have lighting at, at the Business Parkway, or is there gonna be lighting on Biscayne, or how are we gonna handle some of the, the traffic we expect there?
That will be more identified when we do get development plans and site plan reviews coming in. You know, our engineering department really just looked at the plats themselves, wasn't looking at specific sites. Again, that will be looked at when we do get applications for that, but, you know, we do have meetings with our engineering department and Public Works Department, and they look all that over, which will address those concerns when those applications do come forward.
Chairman Reed, were you referring to signalization of the intersections with County Road forty-two or street lighting?
Oh, signaling, yes.
Okay. So, so the plan is to have signals at Biscayne and forty-two, Business Parkway is not slated for signalization by the county for their County Road forty-two corridor plan.
And, and the signaling, traffic signaling at, at Biscayne and forty-two, that'd be in partnership with the county when the traffic volumes hit a certain peak level or something that, for safety reasons, okay, thank you for that.
Yes, and also, these, both this item and the next item, Rosewood Center Second Edition, they do go to the County Plat Commission at tomorrow's meeting, so if there are concerns with future transportation needs and such like that, they will also be making those comments with that as well.
Very good, thank you. Any other questions from commissioners? Commissioner Ellis?
And so just, I'm making sure that I'm reading and understanding this right, all of the traffic is gonna come in on one-hundred-and-forty-ninth, there's not gonna be access across the railroad tracks to three or south to forty-two?
Correct.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Julia? So again, this is a public hearing, so at this time we will open the public hearing. It's time for audience members to come forward, or the applicant to come in and give any comments. At this time, I'll invite the applicant up, if you could state your name and address.
Good evening, Commissioners, my name is Luke Isrelson, I'm with KJ Walk, live in Prior Lake, fourteen-seven-thirty Landau Lane Northeast. I'm just here to answer any questions you might have about the development. I know you had asked earlier about timing on the apartment buildings that we're planning. We do have, for Lot Seven, we're submitting for building permit on that probably this week. So we're looking at getting started on that, those, there's six buildings there that we'll be building, we want to get started on the first one this summer.
And that's, that's the, the medium-density or condos or something, or?
What was that?
Is it the condos that are there, is that what?
They're apartment buildings, twenty-unit apartment buildings, yes.
Which lot is seven, could you?
It's the furthest south one, directly in front of Suite Living.
Maybe if we could tab, tab back like one or two on the, the presentation, Julia could.
It's this one right here, I don't know if you can see that.
Perfect, that's, that's enough for me, yep.
Yep, right here.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there, are there any other questions for the applicant? All right, well, thank you.
Thank you, I'll be back in a little bit.
Thanks, yeah. So at this time, I'll close, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing, is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Reed, seconded by Commissioner Ellis. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? All right, public hearing's closed. Great, it's great to see this development coming forward as well. I mean, that, that area is, I know we've been looking at that why, for a while. It's been considered part of the, it was part of the design sessions we did in terms of a high-growth area and great opportunity for the city. I think I've got all my questions answered. Are there any final comments or thoughts from other Commissioners?
No. I was just going to echo the, the same kind of concern with traffic in terms of how, how people will access it, and especially if they're turning left onto County Road 42 eventually, like if that's going to cause more problems.
Great question. I, I don't think you can turn left onto 42 there, can you? Is there a left turn?
So I believe right now, it's, it's a full intersection. Going forward, it will be a three-quarter, meaning people traveling east on 42 will be able to turn left into the site. People heading west on 42 can turn right. But when you're leaving Biscayne Parkway, you will not be able to turn left. So it is a somewhat restricted access there. And the reality is, on one side, it's a railroad, and the other side, it's a county road. And so there is, is very little control the city has on actually providing additional access. But 149th has been designed with this kind of development in mind and the understanding that traffic would be heading over towards those lights, more than likely if they're not heading west. And also note, Biscayne is a collector road as well.
Yep. Thank you, Anthony. All right, so at this time, we'll, we'll take a motion. Somebody like to make a motion on this one?
I'll try it.
Okay.
Motion to recommend the City Council approve the preliminary and final plats for Rosewood Commons Third Edition, subject to the conditions, the two conditions that were set below.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Boogie, seconded by Commissioner Whitman. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? All right, motion passes. Thank you. All right, so the next one up is also a KJ Walk request, request by KJ Walk Incorporated for preliminary and final plat approval for Rosewood Center Second Edition, which is just east of that last one.
All right. All right, so the final item for tonight, preliminary and final plats for Rosewood Center Second Edition. So a little bit of a summary of the request. So they are requesting approval of preliminary and final plats for the Rosewood Center Second Edition to create five buildable lots for future commercial development and then an additional non-buildable outlot. So like I had mentioned in the previous presentation, commercial development projects do require site plan review. So standards related to setbacks, lot coverage, building height, et cetera, will be reviewed by staff and Planning Commission when those are submitted. So a little bit of an overview of the site locations, you, so the proposed plat area, there's a section of it directly north of County Road 42 and then directly west of Biscayne Avenue. And then the other portion's going to be located north of County Road 42 and then also to the west of that Anytime Fitness building location, and then also directly east of that new, New Horizons Academy that's being constructed. So a little bit of an overview, overview from the preliminary plat that was approved back in 2014 for this area. So the applicant did come forward back in 2014 for preliminary and final plat approval for Rosewood Center and then also for a rezoning of the site and then also a site plan review for the Anytime Building, which is located, you can see here on Lot 2 within Block 1 in this preliminary plat area. So that area was rezoned from R1 Low Density Residential to C4 General Commercial, which was consistent with the community commercial land use destination for that area. So this preliminary plat area you can see was proposed for six buildable lots and then also remaining outlots as well. And then this was the Rosewood, Rosewood Center final plat that was approved back in 2014. So with this final plat that was approved, it was one buildable lot which was approved for this, which is what that Anytime Fitness was built on. And then also four outlots. Outlot A was one for stormwater management. Outlot B was just a remnant lot. Outlot D was for commercial develop, future commercial development, which you're seeing now. And then also Outlot C, which is also that other part of this plat that's being proposed in front of the commission. And then a little bit of an overview for the lot standards. Like I had mentioned earlier, there are requirements for minimum width and minimum area for land that's in the C4 general commercial zoning district. You can see in this table right here that all five do meet those requirements for C4 zoning district lots. Then an overview of the final plat area, you can see the four proposed commercial lots that are directly west of Biscayne Avenue and then that one that's directly north of that Outlot A that is non-buildable. And then a little, then recommendations, so a motion to recommend the City Council approve the preliminary and final Rosewood Center Second Edition plats, subject to conditions 1 through 3. At this time, I can answer any questions that the commission may have.
Thank you, Julia. Yeah, I, I think we kind of covered some of the, the traffic things with, with the last one, and I know we'll review those as well when plans come forward from individual developers. And there'll be traffic studies, and I'm kind of saying this just because it's kind of the practice that we use in case not everybody's familiar with it. So we'll see the traffic studies and volumes, and then there'll be recommendations for signaling and so on. The only question I think I had was, looking at this development, now Outlot A is non-buildable, right? On the north side of 149th?
Correct.
Okay. And so as we, as we move down and start doing developments and these new lots that are being proposed, and we will see, we'll see landscape plans come forward with that, would there be additional landscaping on Outlot A? And I'm, and I'm thinking because just north of there is, you know, it's all residential, right? And there's a lot of homes that have, that back upright to that, that area. So I'm curious if there'd be something, and this may be a question partly for the developer as well, if they would do additional landscaping or how we'd handle, handle that screening from the residents?
I guess in regards, are you more asking about that Outlot A that's south of that Block 1, Lot 1?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's a wetland area, so that's, it's remaining the same. It's not being touched. There's ponding there, you can kind of see located here too. So, I mean, there are setbacks with drainage and utility easements around that area as well, so.
So there's limits on even on that landscape we could do there because of the, the wetland?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. I think that's all I had. Any questions for Julia?
All right, thank you.
Okay. All right, this is also a public hearing, so at this time, we will open the public hearing. I know the applicant is here again. Why don't you come forward and if there's any questions, we can, you can field those for us.
Again, this is Luke Iserson, KJ Walk. No, we're just excited to have buyers that are buying lots out there and, and starting to do some more commercial development. So, I know it's been in the family for a long time, so we're excited to see, see projects moving forward. So we've got several purchase agreements on a couple of these lots and then another one for the Rosewood Commons Third Plat as well. So that's kind of what, what drove the, the need to do these. But, so yeah, we're, we're excited to see the commercial development coming along on, on these sites, so. But yeah, open to answer any questions you have about the site in particular.
Okay. I think all my questions have been answered. Maybe just kind of the follow-up, I mean, I, as we do these sorts of developments, would, would it be, would you, would you be considering putting more landscaping in on Outlot A and to shield, I think, or to buffer from the businesses we're putting in from the residents?
So Outlot A has been deeded to the city, so it's already the city's property.
Okay.
Because it's part of the drainage and it's part of the drainage facilities for this development and surrounding areas. So that, along with the other outlot to the south that you were asking about, that's ponding as well, that's also part of the, the stormwater ponding facility. So there's not really a lot of room for additional landscaping in there.
Okay.
But it does provide a pretty good size buffer from the adjacent neighborhoods.
So as we see the plans coming forward for these individual lots, we'll see landscaping there.
Yep, that'll be part of those site plans for those lots.
All right, thank you. Other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, so I will make a movement to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Move by Commissioner Reed, seconded by Commissioner Bedener. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Public hearing is now closed. All right, so we have a motion in front of us. I, I, I've asked, I think all my questions have been answered. It is really exciting to see this. I mean, it's been kind of a vacant area for a while. We've got the fitness center there and New Horizons going in. I think this is going to be a great add to that area. I think the going concern on the traffic, but those will be answered and addressed. And I know the city's been doing a great job having conversations already about the Biscayne lighting, signal lighting, so that's great. Any final questions or concerns from Commissioners? Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion? A second?
Second.
Move by Commissioner Bedener, seconded by Commissioner Ellis. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion passes. All right, I think that was, thank you. That was the last item on the public hearing agenda. Is there any new business?
There's no new business this evening, Chair.
Okay. Discussion, I think there is at least one discussion topic.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, thank you. Just wanted to note a recent recognition that the city of Rosemont received. So last week, we had the Port Authority, well, along with the mayor, as well as several staff, attend the Minnesota Real Estate Journal Awards banquet held at the Hilton in Bloomington. This is an event that had around just under 1,000 people in attendance to recognize commercial real estate and investment across the state. And happy to announce that Rosemont, we were finalists in two categories, one for City of the Year, and then also Eric Van Oss, our Economic Development Coordinator on the Community Development Team, was a finalist for Economic Developer of the Year. And at this program, it's, it's kind of neat. It's, you, you don't know that you win until they actually unveil the envelope, that type of thing. So we were very excited to see that we were the recipients of City of the Year as recognized by the Minnesota, Minnesota Real Estate Journal. So we just recently did a push out on our social media channels, and that's out there. Received a nice piece of hardware to go along with that. But really, it's, it's a reflection and a recognition of all of the different projects and investment that we've seen over the past year or two years here in, in Rosemount, some of which were just highlighted at your meeting this evening. And then kind of the spinoff, at least from the economic development side, that, that we see that comes from that is that it generates more interest. The type of interest that we continue to hear from our residents and that investment that, that we're looking to attract to Rosemount. So not only was it just good PR, but it was a great recognition of the types of projects and things that we've seen, and it also means that it will likely accelerate additional types of those projects here in the near future. So very proud of everybody here on both the Community Development Team and everybody else that we work with here at City Hall, and it's a, a great recognition for our community.
Yeah, congratulations. That's awesome. Yeah, and Eric too, congratulations. It's, yeah, it's really exciting, especially to hear the developer for KJ Walk saying there's already a lot of interest in those, those lots, so a lot happening.